Yes, good evening and welcome to the Waterloo City Council Work Session on December 5th, 2022. Whoa, please.
Mr. Bowzen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols, Mr. Amos, Mr. Childs, Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Here. I have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the, approve the agenda as proposed and the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 meeting as proposed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. And first off, we have discussion of an ordinance establishing election fees for delinquent payments. And Mrs. Oakley.
All right. So the Fire Department, Legal Department, and Clerk's Office have been working together to take a look at entering into a contract with a new municipal collections company, in fact, called Municipal Collections of America. And so part, as part of that, what we're proposing to do with this ordinance is to have a mechanism in place where as we're going through the collections process, there is a cost associated with doing collections. So what this ordinance would do is allow us to pass on the cost of doing collections to the people who are already owing us funds in the first place, so that when the city recoups those costs, we don't have to take those collection costs back out of the money that we're owed in the first place. Also, what this would do is allow us, at the same time that we're going through the collections process, send these delinquent fees over to income offset. And there are some costs associated with income offset, so it would also tack on the income offset fees, which are significantly lower than collections. It's about $7 for each transaction that goes over to income offset. So it'll allow us to pass that cost also on to the debtor and allow us to recoup those fees as well. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Greider.
So just in general, what are we looking at, like percentage-wise of fees that go unpaid or total amount per year if there's an average that we could have?
And maybe the Fire Department could speak to that. There's, there is, I don't have a firm number. What I can tell you is within kind of the scope of what I work on. So my department utilizes the assessment process. And annually, we'll get, you know, anywhere from $35,000 back to $80-some thousand back. It varies significantly from year to year. But the benefit to pursuing this avenue is, at least for us, the assessment process is extremely labor-intensive. We have to get a list from Water Works, and that does take the Water Works a little bit of time to go back through the list, make sure there's good data on there. Then my staff goes through and adds information such as deed holders, parcel numbers, et cetera, so that we're, you know, casting as wide a net as possible to let people know that this debt exists. And then go through the steps with council and then certify it to the county. For example, this assessment list that we just recently certified, that's not going to go on to the county tax roll until September of 2023. So that debt is going to hang out there for that long and then eventually come up where we can start to collect on it.
Pat Reeler, Fire Chief, I don't have a specific number of accounts that we put into collections. I can tell you that we've been using a collection service for well over a decade. We certainly have thousands of dollars that are set in collection. The income offset program we brought to finance in the Clerk's Office a number of years ago, the city was not participating in it at that time. A number of other departments had really good luck with it. The income offset program is relatively easy if you have a good social security number. So then that's the key to that program. The advantages, obviously, of a collection agency is they do skip tracing and a number of other processes that allow them to track down people that owe us money. So our current collection agency, working with City Attorney Marty Peterson and our City Clerk Kelly, we have decided to part ways with them and go with a new company. That's what we hope to have a contract for you fairly soon, personal services agreement. And we've contacted a number of other cities that use this company. We have to be cautious with collections to make sure they're not strong-arming or harassing people. And we're very comfortable with the company that we're going to propose to move forward. So that's how we kind of all got together. I think Kelly might have mentioned a number. I think we had somewhere $39,000 or $49,000 that we got from income offset, just on the EMS side of things. So that's, you know, tax return, a lottery winning, that type of thing. If they're in that system, then the state withholds that, charges a small fee, and then returns that money to the city.
And Ms. Oakley, just because we want to be cognizant, of course, we want people to pay their fees and all that kind of stuff. But we also, I think, should be cognizant of the fact that, like, sometimes the reason people don't pay fees is because they struggle to be able to financially afford it. Do we have systems in place before we ever get to collections to help folks who might be financially burdened in understanding that situation, before we send it to collections, which can have other bigger repercussions?
And I can really only speak to the sewer garbage side of things. There are income reduction applications that people can fill out annually that'll give them a reduced fee on their, that they see on their water bills. Outside of that, I can't really speak to any other kind of billing.
Pat Reeler, still the Fire Chief. We are, so we work with individuals. We have one individual that comes in and pays a dollar a week to stay out of collections. So we're very flexible. Give us a call, tell us what's going on. But generally, there's some sort of small payment that would be required to keep us from sending to collections.
Okay.
And we're pretty open with it.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure we had that flexibility for this stuff.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yep, good morning, Mr. Bowden.
And on the Water Works Board, they, through Operation Threshold, there's a state fund to assist people, that they can go to Operation Threshold and apply to get a reduction and some funding that way, too. The other advantage of this, in my opinion, is the fact that we certify an assessment. We don't see it on the tax rolls until next September, and the property's changing hands. And that becomes a huge cluster. And then we end up writing off, correct, if it's changed hands, and we don't assess the next, the new owners. Is that correct?
Yeah, if there's a delinquent amount owed and somebody new buys the house, we can't assess for that delinquent fee. So we end up having to write that off, the assessment.
So that should help improve that aspect of it, too.
So if I could just add to that conversation is that it's very labor-intensive if you're trying to put somebody in to collections. Once you're in collections, you also have to work it very hard and it takes a lot of staff time. So on the EMS side of things, you get a 30, 60, 90-day notice prior to going into collections. So that's our standard practice. We use a third-party billing company. The Fire Department does Digitech, and they've been phenomenal for us. We've been with them for probably four or five years. Obviously, the collection agency does take a fee for their work, and that's part of the ordinance that Kelly has on for the work session today, is to recoup some of those costs. But obviously, if we were to go with Municipal Collections of America, their percentage is a 25% ask. And then anything they work that gets paid in income offset, that would be a 10% collection that they would take on that.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
So those measures in place that help people be able to offset the payment or reduce payment based on their income, are those, is wording for that in the, some of the correspondence we send out to those people, letting them know that they're delinquent or maybe delinquent soon?
I don't know that that necessarily appears on the water bill, but I also haven't read my water bill for, in great detail for a while, too. We do have, we do have information on the city website, and we have a fairly decent amount of people that come in annually. The ones, the ones who are aware of it, they're very diligent about coming in annually, to make sure that they get that benefit.
Just want to make sure we're getting the word out as much as we can for those options.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have discussion of amendments to the travel policy.
Yep. Or you can do the podium, too. Bridget Wood, Finance Manager. So the changes that I'm suggesting that we do in the travel policy is basically create an amendment that'll make it so that any travel that's $200 or less is just approval by the department head versus it going to the mayor to be approved first. I think that'll save time and paper. That way, we're not losing stuff in between offices.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. This is something that, when I was running for office, that I had spoken to departments about. And I'm just happy to see it moving in this direction. So I know that I will be in support of this 100%. Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Finance Director Wood, what general portion of these requests are, would meet this threshold? What sort of reduction would we be looking at in terms of paperwork?
We have a, we've started a log since I started of ones that go to the mayor to get signed, just because in case something were to get lost, we'd have a track that, what office it might be in. And I believe in September alone, there was probably 50 requests. And I know some of them got lost. So one of mine was included in that.
50 requests of 200 or less?
Yeah.
Out of, do you have an idea of how many in September?
I'm not sure offhand. I'd have to look.
I can tell you last year, because so once these, after they go to the Department Finance Mayor's Office, they come back to my office and they get, coffee goes, or we scan them into Laserfish, so we can track that. And I can tell you that last year, we had 172 of these travel requests under $200. There were more when we had the $100 limit. So, I mean, that's reduced some of it, but I think, just given the departments, the ability to have just financial ownership over how they spend their money, and then also being more involved in how their employees travel and receive training will be a huge benefit. And then it'll also eliminate redundancies in how we're storing files as well, because we have a $200 travel request folder. But then also, when a department goes to seek reimbursement, that copy of that sheet has to go with their reimbursement. So then it also gets saved into accounts payable.
Yeah, so it would eliminate the double there, because it would just be attached with the invoice then with the department's signature on it.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
And a lot of these $200 or less travel requests is, as I see them, when they, when they come through and bill payments and that are online courses.
Correct.
Where they're just, you're paying to view something in your own office. So, I mean, it just, it just makes sense to move that direction.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Sorry, I got pretty close to that. It works really well.
Kelly, of that 172 that you said from last year, what's the total travel requests? What's the comparable of the ones below 200 to the total? Do you have that also?
I don't know that I can pull that out that quickly. I can get that number for you. I'd have to do a little more searching.
This is to the percentage of each one. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Wood, for your report. Appreciate it. Yay.
Yeah. Man, we're cruising right along today. Apologies. Maybe got you guys started a little too early. Okay, so, discussion on filling a vacancy on the City Council. Let's see. I had sent out a memo to council, kind of giving a little bit more of an in-depth overview of the appointment process versus the special election process. So what I'll just do is give you a brief overview. And then what I really want to hear is from council on your thoughts, et cetera, on which avenue you'd like to pursue. So probably the simplest option that we could do is a special election. There's less heavy lifting for the council, because it is all running through the county, obviously. So in order to initiate that process, the council would have to pass a resolution calling for a special election. There is a 32-day wait prior to when that notice is sent to the county auditor for holding the special election. The earliest we could have one is February 7th. And if there was a runoff, that date would fall on March 7th. The county estimates the cost of holding a special election to be about $7,500. If there's a runoff, that fee doubles to $15,000. If we want to do an appointment, interesting thing with an appointment process is the council gets to set the process. There are some certain parameters we have to meet to satisfy state code. But council essentially gets to set its own process for how it wants to appoint a new member to council. So the process kicks off with a resolution calling for the appointment process, and I have to publish notice in the paper. We have 60 days to appoint a new member to the City Council, and that new individual will serve out the remaining term for Ward 4. We can start the appointment process in advance, because thankfully, Mr. Amos had the foresight to provide us with notice that he was going to be done effective January 4th on November 18th. So we can get started with the appointment process early. The one caveat with following the appointment process is the public can still petition to hold a special election. So if that does happen, they would need 71 signatures in order to call for a special election. So we could get considerably down the road, we could actually get somebody appointed, and the public would still have an opportunity to petition for a special election.
Could I interrupt you?
Sure.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem. Is that just 71 signatures from Ward 4?
Yes, 71 signatures from Ward 4. It's based off of the previous elections' results.
Okay.
Let's see.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. So that's just kind of a rough, rough overview of the two options. If we do go through an appointment process, just some things I think we need to discuss is timeline. And I did rough out kind of a fairly fast, but I think doable timeline in the memo that I sent you guys. We need to agree, to agree on an application. We need to agree on an interview process. We need to agree on how the public will be engaged in the process, because I do think that's a really important part of this. And then also, can the council, does the council feel that they can come to an agreement on a candidate? Because if you don't think you can come to an agreement on a candidate, then perhaps we should look at the special election process. But I think if you feel that you can come up with a good process, then I think there is a strong benefit in this case to pursuing an appointment, because that individual would only serve until, you know, the rest of 2023. And we're getting into budget time, we're getting busy. So what is council's thoughts?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
So Kelly, really quick before, with this, then, in this special session, we would just hold a work session, then, to interview the applicants?
Yeah, I would propose that we have actually a special session, bring in the applicants. I mean, who knows? We could get one applicant, we could get 15 applicants. That'll be the interesting thing. But set up a special session to interview them in public, so that way the public will have access to the potential candidates that are out there.
Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowzen.
No, I didn't have, that was me.
Mr. Childs.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Childs, sorry.
Just a quick question. Does Mr. Amos vote in this?
Yeah, he would, he would be able to vote in this, too.
Thank you.
Yep, he will be, so he'll be with us for December 19th and then the first meeting in January as well.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
So for the, for the interview process, we get to actually interview them, or the public is interviewing them, or is it both? Or is that what we decide?
It's what you guys get to decide. That's the cool thing with this. But I would propose that the council drives the interview, and maybe we get input from the public on the kind of questions that you would like to have that candidate be asked. So kind of almost treat it like a job interview, but just one that's being done in public, so that we have the same set of questions being asked to each candidate. Keep it fair and even.
Do you think that it makes sense to talk to the people that live in Ward 4 to see if they have someone in mind before we start picking, so that we can reduce the petition with the signatures?
I think anything that the council can do to help massage the process, and if you want to appoint, to avoid a special election would be good. So I think anything you can do to engage the public is definitely going to be very important.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
So I generally get nervous when political bodies choose their membership. And the reason for that is because in a representative democracy, the members up here don't represent ourselves. We represent our wards or the city at large. So I would be concerned about picking someone for a variety of reasons. Most importantly, we're public servants, which means that the public should pick us, not the other way around. That being said, I also understand that this ward is up next November. So I have a couple of things that if we decide to move forward with an application process, that I think we should add. One, I think that we should request that candidates collect signatures, similar to what they would do if they were to run in an election. We have all had to do that. So I don't think there's any reason why these folks should not. In addition, it would be able to showcase to us that they have a general level of support from the community. None of us up here live in Ward 4. And I would hate to think that I speak for Ward 4 when I don't live in Ward 4. The other thing that I think that we should consider is that appointing someone confers to them the advantages of incumbency. They get their face in the newspaper on KWWL. They, they get to be referred to as council members. That is a not insignificant advantage in an election. I think an important question, and one that I would heavily consider in favor, would be to ask folks if they are just willing to serve in a caretaker role until there can be a full election next November. The reason that I think having a caretaker for an appointment would be better is that it still allows this body to have full membership to conduct our business, but also ultimately respects the fact that the folks of the 4th Ward should have the ultimate say without anyone putting their fingers on the scales by appointing someone who would then run longer. I get that, that we need to have seven folks, and I certainly believe that Ward 4 needs to have a representative. But I also think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that these folks deserve a voice that, that they ultimately pick, and not one that's ultimately picked by us. And so I lean more towards a special election. I get that cost is a thing, but in doing the math, it's about 11 cents per citizen of Waterloo and about 22 cents. If there was a runoff, a quarter's a pretty small price to pay for democracy, in, in my viewpoint. And so I would prefer that we do as much as possible, if we go through the appointment process, to ensure that Ward 4 is heard and that we aren't tipping the scales by hopefully just appointing a caretaker. And if that's not possible, then I think we should let Ward 4 decide.
Mr. Mayor Protem. I, I, there's, there's a whole quagmire in here, because if, if, let's say we ask the people that wanted to apply to fill out, to get signatures. And let's say we had three people apply, and we, as a council, appoint this person. Any one of those other two with their signatures could require a special election, because they lost. And then we're back to square one, because this, it's, it's just a, there's just so many intricacies to this that, that can come back and really cause us some issues.
To the signatures point, if, if we did require that, how many? How many signatures?
So if 71's the threshold, then, what did you say, 50? Like, we put it below that threshold, so they can't, you know.
All I gotta do is get more.
They, they could, but.
I'm just throwing that out there.
No, they absolutely could, but. I mean, 71 signatures, if I remember from the last time I ran, that's, that's like a good Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, just one neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's an incredibly low threshold either way, which is ultimately why I lean more towards a special election. Because it, it is a low number. But if, if, if we were to go that route, I think it would be somewhere around 50, showcasing that these folks have general community support.
Mayor Protem.
Well, he wasn't comfortable yet. So, so we had to have like 49, maybe roughly 50 or so, depending on what area we were in. But it, would it be possible to just make the amount of signatures more, like in the 100 range? Or is that just, because that, to me, shows community support. If you can get more than 50, more than 79, I mean, I think I turned in almost 300. That's the question. Can we raise the number instead of lowering it? At least for the petition, rather than require 71.
You mean for the application?
So for the petition, you have to have 71, right?
That's for a special election.
Right.
If we follow the appointment process and the public still wants to have a special election, it's 71 signatures in order to trigger that.
So can we raise the amount of signatures required, or is that not?
The council can, as far as the appointment process goes, the council can set whatever they want for parameters for the application process. But by law, there's the 71 signature threshold to trigger a special election for the public to undo the appointment process.
Okay, so it really doesn't matter how many signatures we require, as long as they have 71, they can still request a special?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just speak real quick to the potential timeline we would be looking at if you wanted to do an appointment, just to kind of think through that signature step, if we, if we go that route. So December 19th, there will be a resolution on the agenda, either direction, based on this discussion today. But if it was an appointment, we'd pass a resolution on December 19th to trigger the appointment process. December 20th, we would like to have applications available to the public, so that we give the public a decent amount of time to apply. January 3rd, we would propose that applications would be due by 5 o'clock to the City Clerk's Office. The week of January 9th, I would maybe propose the 9th, get a checkout meeting schedules, hold a special session to interview potential applicants, and then look to appoint a new member on January 17th. So they would potentially have from the 20th to January 3rd to complete the application.
Mr. Mayor. Point of clarification from Jonathan. So when you're talking about the caretaker role, would that just be having that person eliminate themselves from the, from the November election? Or how long would this, I guess, moratorium be on this person from running?
Yeah, in my eye, it's, it's similar to what Cedar Falls does. Whenever they have a vacancy, there's a person who Yeah, and in my eye, it's, it's similar to what Cedar Falls does whenever they have a vacancy, there's a person who comes in and fills until there, until there's an election. So, so how I view it is that this person's here, they are a full member of the council, they, they operate and act as if any, as any of us. Um, but they have self-selected to not run in November, thereby allowing a more open field, um, if there is one. Um, so that, that way, there isn't an incumbency advantage for anyone, it's a, it's a level playing field next November.
So for the following election, they would still be eligible? So not in November, but the next time?
I mean, it, if they wanted to, yes, they could.
Cause I was trying to make sure of the incumbency thing, I mean, they would still have it. Was still there, okay.
Mr. Childs.
I'm personally not in favor of additional requirements to what is already required by law. Um, I would personally would rather appoint someone to this body for one year and I don't want to have the stipulation that they can't run or they shouldn't run. Um, I don't want that stereotype put on them that they're up here to be something other than an actual council person. And I personally don't see it as a bad thing if someone, if all three applicants are wanting to run again. I, I don't see that as a negative in any way. Um, I think we want people that want to be active, want to be engaged and we have a vacancy and we need to fill that vacancy. I also don't like the idea of paying for something to the citizens. If they, if the citizens want us to pay for it, they will force us to do so through collecting their signatures. So I would rather go through, personally would rather go through the appointment process and have someone on this council in January.
Only us, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
And to that state, you would have someone on January and who could be done in February.
They could be, but that would be the citizen's choice.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
And those are all very valid points, I, I don't disagree with my colleague from Ward One. But no one, no one up here lives in Ward Four. Um, and I think that's, that's important for us to, you know, three folks up here represent Ward Four um, in their capacity as at-large elected members, but how can I, representing my own ward, accurately understand um, what the folks of the fourth ward want and need in a representative? I think that's the, that's the fundamental question. I don't, I wouldn't see a caretaker role as anything less than someone who has decide, folks decide this all the time, that they're, that they're not going to run in the next election, that does not make them any less effective, um, just because they have um, self-selected out. Uh, I think that we, we just need to be cognizant that we aren't just selecting an employee. We're not selecting a police chief or a fire chief or the director of public works. We're selecting a, a public elected official um, who represents a specific geographic area of the city. And we just need, I believe that we need to be cognizant of that.
Well, well, let me ask you a question, so why don't, why don't you just add signatures to the, as a part of the application process that a person has to get a certain amount of signatures? I mean, but, but the thing is that the, the, the amount to overturn it, that's set, that's state, that's state law. Um, so you add that, but right now, we have, it's um, Mr. Amos, uh, of course, his election is done and his last day is on the, I forgot, uh, second week, second meeting. Um, there's about, the election is what, November, November something? Um, and there's a very short time and a very short window because this is in the last year, the last ten months of his term. So I don't, you know, I guess we can overthink it, but um, I mean, or, or spend, I don't know how we can legally tell somebody that you can't run in the next election because uh, that person is an eligible voter, that person can run in the next election. They can tell us no and still do it. It may be disingenuous, but I mean, incumbents have been beaten.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, Kelly, you had a point and we'll go to, to Nia, did you, we'll go here.
I, I'm good, I'm good.
I think if, I think if we really make sure that we have the involvement of Ward Four before it gets to the interview process, I don't think it will be an issue of we're picking someone to serve them because this, this person that will be up here giving this, during this application interview process, will literally be handpicked by Ward Four. And that's where we all come in with making sure they're involved in this process and encouraging them to pick someone that they believe will serve them in the right way. So then that also reduces the chance of us having a special election because this person was picked by their community. So we just really have to make sure that we are keeping them engaged through every part of the process and we are forcing them to be involved so it won't be a, you picked this person without us knowing, we were in your neighborhood every day for a month. Putting this information out there, making sure we went to all the churches, the workplaces, the gas stations, that wherever people are that live in Ward Four will be there letting them know what's going on so they can bring us the person that they want to represent them.
Mr. Mayor. Then I think that sounds like an election then. Uh, I mean, that, that sounds like a campaign and if, if that's what we want, and I think we all want the people of Ward Four to be duly represented, then then I think we should have a campaign if that's, if that's where we're at.
But how is it a campaign to get them to, to make sure they're involved? I'm not, we're not going there campaigning for a person, we're going there to make sure the community is involved in the process and they are encouraging someone to do this.
Wouldn't the best vehicle to ensure that people are involved be an election where the candidates can talk about their issues?
If I may, I would say no. I think we've shown through turnout in the past that it, getting out the information, going out, being in public does not create voters. I mean, I'm sorry, but elections, we need more people to vote. I don't think that's the best, I think what Mrs. Water is, or Miss Water, apologies, is saying is that we can do the campaign part without the election part.
Sorry. I, I'm a little confused. We shouldn't have an election because we would know better than, I'm, guess I'm confused on the, on the logical reasoning. If we want to know what folks want, which I'm, I'm completely on board with, I think the Ward Four should make this ultimate decision. I don't think the argument is like, well, they don't show up, so, so we will just help them do it. I think, well, that's what the arguments sound like is that elections don't have that, have that feel. I, I think this is very important that that if we are going to engage in the populace, which is, which is fine, then why don't we have the candidates who themselves are engaging in the process, talking about the issues that are most important to them? And then ultimately just let Ward Four decide. And they decide twice in one year, then that is, then that is what they decide. But I don't think the answer is, is less, is less electing the people, is less allowing the people to make their voices heard. I think it's more.
I don't think anyone up here is trying to take away anybody's voice or their vote, or I don't, I don't think that's what's happening.
Mr. Mayor. Whenever you're finished.
I, I'm finished.
The, the people of Ward Four, depending on who, who applies.
Right.
If this, if the majority of this council chooses to go with the appointment process and seventy-one people in Ward Four aren't satisfied with that choice, we're gonna have a special election.
Yes.
Plain and simple. So, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of torn because I, the, the statement that, that the people of Ward Four are picking this person through this application process, we're ultimately picking that person through the application process. Not, not the people of Ward Four. Because, you know, you could have three applicants and one person have a hundred and twenty signatures and one person, if we do go, if we go the signature route, one person have fifty signatures and we may choose that fifty signature.
Right.
So I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of up in the air either way, but I can guarantee you that if, if seventy-one people in Ward Four aren't going to be satisfied with an appointment process, we're gonna have a special election. Seventy-one's a low threshold.
Yes.
Very much so.
And Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I, I completely agree with you, I think, don't make this as complicated as we are making it, it's, I personally would rather hold the appointment process and if the citizens of Ward Four say no, then they say no and then we have an election.
And by the time this, the election happens, we'll be part of the way through March, April, May. Then we'll turn around and have another election in November. Um, so given the timeframe, though, you know, it's always been, for me, my thoughts have always been uh, that we go ahead and hold an election, but when the fact that you only have a year left.
Right.
Um, given the timing of the odd year with the state legislature, um, need to make a decision. Um, but we also need to adopt a process. Now, there's some variations that we can potentially do from uh, maybe a couple days, uh, sometime in January, maybe um, you have uh, internal interviews, but you have someone come up and make a presentation about their ideas uh, for it. So it's not holistically election because folks are making, making, uh, the council is given the authority by the state legislature to make decisions. So it's not a formal election, but it is a formal presentation and then you have the information and can make a decision. If you have uh, the person get um, you know, twenty-five signatures, uh, there is public notice that this person has gone out into the public uh, to had, at least had some signatures themselves. Um, so either way, if, if folks, folks could, you can have the greatest candidate uh, in the world and people can still come up and come with seventy-one uh, votes to overturn that. But what it, what it may mean is that you may not have representation for the greater part of the year unless you're at-large councilman. And with the city council, the most representation that you can even have for one ward uh, is three. Uh, you have the person in that ward and then you have your two at-large persons based upon where they live at. So, um, yeah, we need to kind of make a decision if we want to change up the formal presentation part from uh, the candidates. Definitely can do that so the community can hear uh, what you hear, but we need to get a decision made. And if the, that's why we have the process of seventy-one, so that they can come back. Seventy-one was a good year too.
Yeah, I think, I think we should start with uh, we should start with, are we doing a special election or are we doing an appointment? And then, based on that, if it's appointment, let's get into the minutia of what that's gonna look like.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
When, in what venue do we make that decision during the council meeting?
For what, which one?
Yes.
Right now.
Right now?
Yeah, yeah, cause the goal is, because Jerome has provided us with advance notice, we have the opportunity to get the process started. So whether it's an appointment or a special election, um, we're going to have a resolution on the nineteenth directing either process. So I can get that notice to the county auditor and we can get going.
Do we need a motion for that? Or just a?
You can, you can make a motion, you can go around the room and say what you think.
Wait, 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 so, December nineteenth, there's a, there's a vote, not the vote for who is selected. A vote for the process.
The vote for the process is the nineteenth.
So that's the nineteenth, you vote for that publicly. If you would like us to get some information from the county offices about timeframes, but we need to vote if it's going to be filled through election or if it's going to be filled through appointment. That's the nineteenth, correct?
But really, if we're doing, if we're doing a special election, I mean, that's the end of the decision-making process for the council. If we're doing an appointment and we want to maintain a schedule of appointing by January seventeenth, we need to come to a consensus on what that process looks like so that on the twentieth, applications can go out and information can start to be communicated to the public.
So you need to know now.
So.
Not, not really.
So we, we have a, we worked on an application, uh, so do you, do you have a copy of the application?
It's in here, isn't it?
So you've seen, you've seen the copy of the application?
Yes.
I mean, like, we need to know, do, so for instance, we have an application process. Would you like them to have X amount of signatures? And the signature is not a prerequisite like it is during the election, but at least the signature says that I have talked to twenty-five people in the fourth ward who are in support of me doing this. So then that way, folks can't come back and say, no one in the fourth ward is heard or no one in the fourth ward has known about this candidate. They have X amount, or you don't have to. The question is, what would you like to see?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
According to what Kelly sent us, if we, if we chose a special election with everything that has to be filed, correct? It's, the earliest is February seventh and, and, and the runoff would be March seventh. So if we just move forward with this process, the appointment, we're, we're still, like I say, they, they can still petition as soon as we appoint that person. They have thirty or sixty days to, thirty days to petition, the seventy-one signatures after that.
Yeah, the deadline, yeah, the deadline that they would have to file the petition by would be January thirtieth.
Yeah, they have almost.
If we're doing an appointment on January seventeenth.
Okay, so they have two weeks.
Yep.
Two weeks to fill it. So then we'd be right, right back to square one, we'd have, we'd have a council person sitting in here until the special election. Correct, Mr. Mayor? So we wouldn't be without a person here.
Right.
Just not, might not be the person that the, that the people of Ward Four vote for. So I guess I would be in favor of moving forward with this process because the people of Ward Four, if they're dissatisfied with our process can, can hold a special election and, and we would have a, a council person onboard by, by the seventeenth of January. And, and that person could fill that seat until the special election.
Yes.
And we wouldn't go without a person here. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move forward with the uh, with the appointment process. And I know it doesn't really all too much make a difference on how many signatures they get, but I would like for them to capture more signatures just to reduce the risk of a special election. They can actually get out there and, and talk to the people.
How many would you propose?
You said twenty-five?
Probably about the most would be twenty-five, it's a very short window. And then we also have to develop um, some type of form, form uh, for that and to be able, to be ready to explain that, that has to be ready by December nineteenth.
Sir, wouldn't that have to be vetted by someone in city hall then that the signatures were valid and like they do at the county? And, and that they actually live there?
We.
In Ward Four?
So what I would say is, anytime I take in a petition on another, on a topic, um, I just, I count the number. I take it on their face. I don't necessarily think it's worthwhile to devote staff time to ensuring that they live there, unless the council sees differently. That's up to you guys, but generally when we receive petitions, it's on, we take it on its face.
We do?
Yes, and I believe the county does that as well.
Unless someone calls it to question.
But again, that's up to council, cause it's your process.
I would um, we can work out some way to verify the signatures. We'll have Noel do it.
There you go.
He's got free time.
Yeah.
Do you um, do you want um, do you want a, an opportunity, I mean, if they, you, you read it, you want something to say?
No, I'm good, that, that was going to be verified of signature, that was my thing, but we started talking about something else, but we got back to it.
Yeah, uh, also, do you want uh, a day or days where they come up to the dais and say who they are, a little bit about their background and what their interests are?
During their interview process, would that be part of that or would that be before the interview process?
It could be, whatever you, whatever you want. Normally, we just go to an election, but this timeframe is so short, so I haven't done this myself.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If we do go forward with an appointment, um, I don't think it should be them coming up here and interviewing with us. I think it should be a community forum somewhere in the fourth ward, um, where I think we should be present. Um, but so, almost a town hall style, so we can hear from them. But so, almost a town hall style, so we can hear from them, and we can hear from constituents as well. If we want to make sure that we have that voice, I think doing it in the community would be a, a good step. Just cuz sometimes it can be hard to get here.
So, do you want a, I'm sorry?
I would support that.
So, not here, out in the public, but you're not looking for a debate, are you?
No, no, I would think, I would think, one candidate, fifteen candidates, however many they are, they come up, they have a set number of time, but they're not interacting with each other, they're interacting with the public. And maybe a moderator, or, or a panel of moderators of like, hey, here are the questions that folks from Ward Four said are really important to them. You know, what are your, what are your thoughts on that? But no, I'm not seeing a, a debate, no.
And so, at what point will council have to be able to deliberate, deliberate if you have, you want them all on the same night? Or we choose a couple nights, them do individually, or one person will say, oh, you got me going first, and then you have the other person coming up after me. They heard everything I said. So like, how would you? So, should we work on some type of public forum process?
Yes, but I, you, you are correct that there are some logistical pieces, for sure.
So some type of public forum process?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we did a, a public forum process, we could still have, at, to this dais, them, them come up and then answer questions at the council also. If, if they're just gonna be responsive to the people of Ward Four. I mean, we could, we can work a day in, if we, if we needed to, if, if it's as important as this would be for this position. That's just my thoughts. I don't want it complicated, though. It's, it's complicated enough, depending on which direction you go.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking, before I go to Ms. Rodd, I was thinking that these folks would just talk a little bit about their background, talk a little bit about their thoughts for the future. They're, they're answering pretty distinct questions on the application, but maybe if we just kept it general answers, then that keeps it from somebody else being able to snatch. Cuz it's hard for me to talk about your experience, and it's your experience when it's my experience. So, maybe there's two or three questions that we may be able to ask of each one that does not have anything to do, well, you know what I'm saying, where you can't, your ideas for cutting the budget. Well, reduce the council salaries, you know.
Leadership style, that kind of stuff. And then at the forum, if, I'm sure folks will have specific Ward Four questions, then they can, you know, about certain things. I think that would help give us a umbrella, understanding, and then.
So let me ask you a question. So if I didn't want, so if I didn't want, if I didn't, if, if, if I got to ask any question I wanted to, to any of the candidates, I can weed you out by the questions that I ask, just because I don't want you there. You know, you, why are you using beer trimmer from somewhere else? You know, you can come up with anything.
Yeah.
So I think we, we need to have a process, or whatever it is that's consistent among each person, is, if it is on the city page, you know, residents of Ward Four, tell us three things that you believe should be in a candidate. Something that's consistent upon each one, right? That, cuz like I said, you can weed people out in a public forum if you don't have some consistency at that point. I think, I think ultimately, though, November's going to say a lot, right? But, right now, we need to have a simple process where they can answer consistent questions in a public forum or setting. And we need to move forward and make a decision. And if the public doesn't like it, we need to make sure, fully well, that they know what the process is for changing that. So, we'll, we'll put some public forum. We got a pretty aggressive calendar, but we'll try to put something, but.
We'll whip up a public forum.
And then, don't the first thing, but when they're voting on December nineteenth, do they, all the process, well, the process has to be public, it has to be consistent for everyone, but do all of the nuts and bolts have to be worked out on that? Or we would like it to be, though, correct?
I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial for both the council and the public, and potential applicants, to have the general parameters of what the application process is gonna look like written into the resolution and available the night of the nineteenth. And then that way, it'll help staff be able to get that information out to the public the next day. So, as soon as the twentieth hits, we can hit the ground running with this process. Because it is an aggressive timeline.
And, when would the council, when would they have time? If it is a public forum, well, cuz it has to be, we have to do everything that's televised and open, cuz it'll be a majority of council unless, since they're non-elected, is there a group that could facilitate it? And then, I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So we'll try to put something in together, try to grab in all of the thoughts.
Women voters, or, or a group that's done something similar?
Yeah.
I completely agree with you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Moving on.
All right. Next, we have a discussion of adding, oh, we had a couple minutes left. Was there anything else?
Yeah, we got a whole nine minutes.
All right.
Generally speaking, I guess, is the council okay with the form of the application?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. And we'll, we'll work out the signature piece.
Is there a, will we be able to ask them, cuz on there, just ask them, what do they see for Ward Four? But are we able to ask them, what did they, what did Ward Four tell them that they needed as well? You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. You could work up a question like that.
Like, not what you see, but like, what?
What do people tell you is the most important need for Ward Four? Okay, yeah, can be that.
I mean, it goes to number three on there. What do you believe are the top three challenges facing Waterloo? Well, what are your goals and priorities for Ward Four? Hopefully, they're wanting the same. You don't wanna take it for granted.
Cuz what I believe might be different from what the people actually want and need.
You can live in Ward Four, it'd be different from. All right. We are on to downtown parklets. Who's in, who's running that?
Jessica.
Noel Anderson and Jessica.
That you know?
Long time no see.
Very long time.
All right. Hello, thank you guys so much for allowing me the time to come chat with you this evening. I am here actually representing the City of Waterloo's Complete Streets Advisory Committee, and then also showing support of Main Street Waterloo for this project. So, in May of twenty twenty-one, the City of Waterloo, in partnership with the University of Iowa and the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities, did a downtown parking study. And the study showed an underutilization of parking in downtown, and supported the information that was actually found in a two thousand and eight parking study done by Rich and Associates. One of the recommendations of this study, or of this report, was in, in an effort to bring more energy to downtown Waterloo, underutilized on-street parking areas could be transformed into outdoor dining or recreation spaces, or called parklets. In February of twenty twenty-two, a Black Hawk County Master Pedestrian Plan was adopted. Within the planning and zoning recommendations of this master plan, there are five recommendations, one of which is, adopt pedestrian through zones on sidewalks in business districts. Within this recommendation, it is suggested to create parklets to provide more outdoor seating and space while maintaining the pedestrian through zones. With, with the, with the adoption of the master plan, the Complete Streets Advisory Committee reviewed each recommendation and voted on the ones they wanted to put, focus on and work towards accomplishing and making changes for over the next year. And the parklets was the number one thing that was voted on. Sorry, establishing a manual and guidelines to be able to implement parklets received the most votes, and, and a subcommittee was created. The subcommittee is made up of representatives from the City of Waterloo Public Works, Engineering, Building Inspectors, Leisure Service Department, in partnership with Main Street Waterloo, InterCog, and Experience Waterloo, as well as downtown property owners. The team reviewed policies and manuals from other communities who have implemented parklets. We also had conversations with other cities and businesses who have installed parklets in front of their business. From this information, the team developed the draft manual and guidelines that was included in your council packet. The Parklet Subcommittee would like to work with the city departments and city council to finalize and adopt the manual and process by February twenty twenty-three. This will allow businesses and property owners time to plan and budget, and apply for the parklet installations as early as April twenty twenty-three, which is allowed by the outdoor seating resolution currently in place. On a side note, I am working with the clerk's office and the legal team to evaluate the current outdoor seating resolution and make adjustments that will also include allowance of parklets. And you'll see that coming before you guys in the coming months. So, all of this background, some of you might be asking, what the heck is a parklet? A parklet, or the term parklet is generally attributed to San Francisco, where it was first used to describe the process of converting one or more street parking spaces on urban streets into a small public park or enclosed seating area. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, parklets became widely, or more widely created by using a streetery, where they offered convenient solutions for many cities to allow restaurants to remain open by serving patrons in the open air. Parklets are an innovative and cost-effective way to add gathering spaces to public streets, offering new outdoor gathering spaces, and bring new activity to the street and nearby businesses. They play an important role in neighborhood placemaking, encouraging community, and interactions in vibrant street life. Parklets are street scape enhancements, providing an economical solution for increased space. They introduce those new street scape features such as street seating, landings, art, potentially even bicycle parking on platforms extending into the parking lane of a street. We're looking at a goal, we're looking at the goal of this parklet program for downtown Waterloo to make it more livable, walkable, and beautiful. We're, this program is a step towards the enhancement of the public realm using new tools and techniques. Benefits include transform, transform underutilized street space into vibrant usable space, support local business community by activating community corridors, foster community interaction and social engagement, empower more groups and entities to provide pedestrian enhancements that contribute to livability, and attract more pedestrians to downtown. The application and man, the application manual and guidelines were created to guide applicants through the processes and procedures for applying to install a parklet. It provides a comprehensive overview of the program, policies, procedures, criteria, guidelines for creating parklets in the city right-of-way, et cetera. Business owners, property owners, and other potential applicants are encouraged to read the manual prior to the application process, but do have to sign off that they have read it when they complete the, the final application. Eligible applicants must have the organizational capacity to provide daily maintenance, who may, and these might be, but are not limited to, ground floor businesses, street-side property owners, and then others could be determined on a case-by-case basis as we work through this process, which with Main Street Waterloo and the City of Waterloo. Applicants are responsible for the design and installation, capital costs, liability insurance, maintenance, and upkeep. This is all very similar to the current outdoor seating that happens. Successful applicants will be required to submit a confirmation of eligibility application, and if that is approved, they will then be invited to complete a full application. And once that application is approved and things are moving forward, they would enter into a memorandum of understanding and sign a maintenance agreement with the city. The memorandum of understanding will commit the applicant to comprehensive general liability insurance. I think it's one million dollars and worker compensation, but we'll, we'll make sure it follows what the City of Waterloo requires. Keep the parklet surrounding areas clean and clear of debris, maintain landscaping, watering, anything if there's vegetation included. Secure furniture and other movable items as deemed appropriate after business hours. Installation and removal adhering to the date specified in the memorandum of understanding. The confirmation of eligibility will ensure an applicant does not get too far into the process before they do not, before understanding that they do not meet site requirements. And so some of those site requirements that we'll be looking at with this confirmation of eligibility, making sure it's located in unrestricted parking lane, adjacent to the sidewalk, it cannot take over a handicap space, located on streets with traffic speeds of thirty miles per hour or less, does not block access to public utilities, hydrants, alleys, or driveways, does not block existing drainage patterns, must be fifteen feet from catch basins, can occupy between one and two parking spaces length not exceeding thirty-two feet, and we are working with the Streets Department to get final dimensions on that, to make sure we're, the thirty-two feet, and any feet that we have in here are correct. And then, at this point, this is just in the downtown Waterloo area. So, after they complete the, the confirmation of eligibility application is an online application that's public, anyone can see it. That would be submitted to Main Street Waterloo, and we would review it and work with the city departments to make sure that the site is okay. We're gonna look at potential conflicts with future street projects in the area, potential conflicts with public utilities, hydrants, alleys, and driveways, traffic patterns, street regulations, road geometry, operational considerations. And parklets cannot use more than thirty percent of the total parking space on the block phase. This thirty percent limitation is then limited, so we don't have a block that there's no parking and it's only parklets. Full application, if and when that confirmation of eligibility is approved, they would be sent a private link or PDF file of an application that's not public record, or not available to just anyone in the public, for them to complete. The applicant, in that application, they would submit the application, understanding of commitment, as well as preliminary project budget and design, and those types of things. If that application is approved, that's when they would enter in that memorandum of understanding and maintenance agreement. And then you'd go through the process of the city installing the notice of, the notice of construction at the site, and construction installation would begin. So all of the agreements are gonna be between the city and the applicant, but based off of conversations with different city departments, it's been asked that Main Street just be the main contact, and we keep all of those files, to not any, anything more than necessary to city staff's plate. And, the agreements have to include approval or sign off by the property owner, if that's different than the business owner as well. Agreement shall not confer property rights and may be terminated if the city or Main Street Waterloo determines the right-of-way is needed. It should include provisions for insurance and indemnif, it will include provisions for insurance indemnification, maintenance, and other reasonable provisions as determined by the city in Main Street Waterloo. And the agreement would be April first through October thirty-first, each calendar year, and there'd be a new application each year. and there'd be a new ca, um, application each year. Uh, no business or property owner can operate a parklet without executing the full application process. Food and beverages, um, if, if that's a business that has those types of things would need to be available for service during hours of operation. Um, all parklets serving alcoholic beverage must have an employee monitoring the area at all times during the hours alcohol is consumed and shall dispense any alcoholic beverages under state law. Amplified sound equipment will continue to not be permitted. Blockage of building entrances and exits is not permitted. They're subject to an annual application, which is also one of the things we're working on changing with the just overall outdoor seating resolution. The parklet owner is responsible for trash removal and, and maintenance. It's very repetitive, cause we want to remind people of that. And they must meet all accessibility standards of the city, state, and federal law. And, um, they must conform with all city, state, and federal laws and regulations. We are looking at wanting to have the fee for operations of parklets to be set by resolution by city councils. So they're set and everyone is very transparent as to what those fees are and where they're coming from as well. The, um, the parklets are limited to where they can be positioned in relation to bus stops, utilities, street corners, and required to have a perimeter of a specific height while still keeping that visibility and sightline to traffic, but in buffer zones, um, keeping safety for the seating area from the traffic. They must possess all required permits, meet ADA requirements, maintain roadway drainage, allow for access to any below-ground utilities, be properly insured, possess maintenance plan and enhance, enhance the vibrancy of the area with seating and landscaping. Um, design guidelines are part of this and there are suggestions of ki, of types of materials that we would suggest using. A lot of these are a little repetitive ADA compliance. The platform has to be flush with the curb for safety regions, reasons. Curbside drainage is not blocked, um, trying to think, hit on the ones that aren't repetitive. But this is just kind of reiterating things to make sure people understand what those design guidelines are. Each year, kind of the process will, what would happen is what we're proposing is each year, um, early in the year, when, um, we're ready to start accepting applications, Main Street Waterloo will contact the downtown businesses and property owners and let them know the application process has opened. And then, then we will start receiving those confirmation of eligibility applications. And we would review them to ensure the site meets those minimum requirements and there's no design conflicts. We're asking for, um, I think in the manual, it says twenty day, business days from submittal for us to be able to review that and touch base with all of the different city departments that would have a say and input on this. Following the approval of the site, um, and barring any design conflicts, the applicant would be invited to complete the full application. And then following the submission, the Main Street Waterloo Design Review Council would review the application based on accessibility, property owner support, capacity to design, and quality of design proposal. Um, and we're looking for, we're making sure there's plenty of time for us to be able to have those reviews and confer with all of the departments as well. The city would be notified of approval and construction dates. Um, the, we're, the applicant would be required to notify Main Street Waterloo of installation dates and removal dates. At some point during the construction each year, city would visit the site just to review the installation and construction, make sure that they're meeting any, everything they need to meet. They can't be installed before April first. And they, we are giving them until November seventh to remove in case we have a beautiful Halloween like we did this year, so people can enjoy those parklets one last time. And then they have a couple of days following a weekend to get those parklets removed. That is all dependent upon whether and there, it will be, um, a clause in there in the agreement and in the manual saying that the Main, that Main Street Waterloo or the city reserve the right to request parklets be removed due to weather, so early snowfall. When it comes to fees that will be, um, on the applicant, we don't have the set fees yet. We're still waiting on some information from the different departments, but it would take into account parking space rental loss during that, those time periods, traffic delineators, signage, and then an administration fee. So covering it so it's not an expense to the city. And then kind of looking at the timeline, this month into next month, we're obviously presenting the concept to you. We want to work with, um, city council and the different city departments to finalize the manual and guidelines. By the end of February, we would like to, um, have approval and adopt the ma, the manual and guidelines so we can open the application process for twenty twenty-three. Um, and then in March, work with the applicants on this process. And then, uh, April through October, hopefully have one, two, or four parklets in our downtown to add just a little something more. And then, um, in November, the subcommittee and the Complete Streets Committee would discuss, how did the program go and evaluate if it's something to move forward with, present to city council again in December to make sure everyone's on board. And then hopefully January twenty twenty-four, the next application process opens. So that was a lot. Your main contacts are Felicia with, um, with the Complete Streets. And then I got to take the lead, cause this is a project in downtown. But, um, I know there were questions from engineering, um, about like, what if there's an emergency and something has to be removed from that? A lot of that, I, we haven't found in the manuals, so that, that will probably be put in the memorandum of understanding. So everyone's clear and they're signing a piece of paper that says what those are gonna be. But those are some of the questions we're still looking at and we're, working with the city departments to answer. But any questions from you guys?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a couple. Two weeks ago, you were here with the parking. Three hundred thousand dollar outlay for the kiosks and, and the equipment that we're gonna need. And four dollars an hour parking, twenty, forty, sixty dollar fines to, to help us break even on this parking. Now through this parklet program, we're willing to give up thirty percent of the parking spaces per block. And, and so how do, so we're talking for six months. So if you're talking like six hours of, of parking, two hours are free and someone's there for eight hours, we're losing twenty-four dollars a day for that parking space. So we could be losing forty-eight bucks per parklet, per day. How do we recoup that through the application process?
That's part of the permit fee, or I guess it's not gonna be technically called a permit. That's part of the application fee. I'm working with Jerry at Republic Parking to determine exactly what the income or the revenue is from one space during that period of time. We have focused our data on the west, the three hundred block of West Fourth, cause they have the least amount of area for outdoor seating and think they would benefit the most from this program. Um, and so she's, that, that number would be included in the cost of somebody being able to have a parklet.
And, and that cost that you're putting in there would be a cost based on the four dollar an hour plus our, our fines for that, for those areas.
Which is, which is why we don't have the number. We started looking at it and then presenting those updated numbers to city council with the parking updates. So we're trying to figure out what that would potentially look like and translate into with those changes.
You don't have any idea what, what the cost would be to, to recoup two parking spaces for six months, right now?
I know I have it in an email, um, and I apologize, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can find that and send that to you when I get back to my computer.
And, and then my next question would be, I can understand your two spaces, thirty-two feet on, on East or West Fourth Street. How do we equate that on Sicamar and Lafayette where you have angled parking? Because two spaces is not thirty-two feet.
Um, it's up to thirty-two feet. And we did discuss in the subcommittee if we would allow them on those angled parking and it would just come out the thirty, it'd kind of flip, meaning rather than being horizontal to the curb, it'd be perpendicular. Um, and there are parklets that we have seen dem, demonstrate that. But, uh, that's some of those measurements that we want to get from the Streets Department to make sure we know exactly how far, cause we want to make sure there's kind of that bumper area so a car wouldn't be pulling in at an angle at that close to a parklet too.
Because I could see if, if you change from horizontal to perpendicular, that, and then we, and we take out, take out to the end of that parking space, that is, to me is more hazardous than if we're out six feet in, on Fourth Street as far as traffic coming down the road. But the other issue is, is if you just allow the two spaces on the angled parking, and by the time you put your bullards up and, and clear that one space, you're actually gonna get about a, less than a, less than a space and a half with your bullards and, and that parking. So I, I don't, I don't see it working well on the angled parking as, as I see it on, on the parallel parking.
Okay.
And then, uh, who, who exactly is the Main Street Design Council? Because some of this stuff is, is based on their approval.
So, um, it's, Main Street Waterloo has four councils that, and one of them being the Design Council. And part of our, uh, credit, our agreement with the city is that is a public forum. Um, and we submit that to the city, our agenda and our minutes each month. And it's made up of design experts, sign experts, architects.
Can you just give me an idea who's on it right now?
Mason from Nagel Signs, uh, Brandon Alvarado from Pretty Good Co., Yvonne Valchev from Envision Architecture, uh, are, are just a couple off the top of my head.
Okay. And then it does have to, the park would have to abide by all of our, our codes and regulations, because if you, if you, if you have food and alcohol in the business, you have to be able to provide it for the parklet.
Yep.
Which would also require outdoor sales for beer and liquor permits, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And I know that the outdoor seating resolution, I think right now it has to be, um, adjacent, I mean, immediately adjacent to the building. So that's kind of what we're looking at with some of those updates to the resolution to make sure that it's allowed.
That's all I have, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, just quickly, uh, I'm happy to see this moving to us here, uh, in Alexandria, Virginia, where I go back and visit every year. They have them amply throughout the street in Old Town and they bring a lot of business to the downtown. So I think that's something that we're gonna have to, we, we need to remember up here on council that that's gonna bring people to our downtown to utilize those services. Uh, I did have one question in general, there seems to be a lot of players in this, a lot of different departments, Main Street, all these different, eh, who is the center? Who is the application ultimately going to and who are collecting the fees?
It's all gonna go to Main Street, but we would disperse, the only thing that Main Street would actually keep would be maybe a portion of the admin fee for administering this program. And that was, that came from our conversations with the different departments from the city. And there are so many players in this because we wanted to cover all our bases and make sure every department that this could potentially impact had input and gave us their concerns and their feedback.
Great. I, I, I don't think I have any issues with there being so many people, I think that's a good thing. My, my concern is there needs, it seems just, just a lot of pieces going on. And, uh, for money, for example, for fees, if this is ultimately a city venture, then I think fees need to be collected by the city, not by Main Street.
And I'm okay with that, it was just based off of the conversations, is why we wrote it the way it's in there right now.
Well, thank you.
Counsel? Alright, so, um, you know, when you, when you take a look at trying to, uh, make downtown, uh, bikeable, walkable, I think we can add, is eatable a word? But being able to be there longer to enjoy it, it has a different level of ambiance uh, to what's currently there, um, our sidewalks are a little bit, uh, longer. So, uh, I think it's incredible if we can, uh, get the logistics done right. So thank you both for, and your committees for coming up and bringing this forward to, uh, the city council. I think it's a, uh, it's a great idea and be a great amenity, uh, for people as well. So without further ado.
Most of your turn. Second.
Most of you wait a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.